... of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Mike did tell me that there was an error on number one. We are not set for a public hearing. We did that at our last meeting. So there is no item A on number one. So we'll just have one item on that one, and that would be to approve the second reading of, or handle the second reading of that ordinance change. Is there any other changes to the agenda?
I'll make the approval of the agenda with that one.
Okay. I got a motion by Dave Brusick to approve the agenda with the amendment, and a second by Sean Ryan. There's no further comment. I'll approve the agenda. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. So I guess the first thing, are you taking it, Ken, or is it Mike?
I will.
Okay.
All right, so the first item on the agenda here tonight, if you recall back to the November 2nd, 2015 council meeting, we had various items that related to the acceptance of the 1400 block of Gillian Street Southeast to become a public roadway. One of the items specifically was an ordinance that would maintain what we just simply called the status quo for all the homeowners directly to the south of Gillian Street Southeast. What that ordinance would do that was introduced on November 2nd would basically keep their setback in place as Gillian Street is a private road at this point, or was at that point, and maintain that setback into the future so that they don't have a new 30-foot setback from that becoming a public road that would affect things such as placement of sheds and other additions that would have normally have not applied to their properties if not for the road becoming public. Scott Riggs had drafted the ordinance that you had reviewed at the November 2nd meeting that would simply maintain that setbacks as they were before the road became public. And all we're looking for here tonight is a second reading on that ordinance. And basically, if you look on the back page of the map, it's the five properties on the south side of the 1400 block of Gillian Street Southeast. All the property owners at the time that Gillian Street was initially looked, petitioned to become a public road, those people were at the meeting and asked that this ordinance be considered so that they weren't negatively affected. So just looking for a second reading and recommend adoption of the ordinance that would pertain to those lots.
Okay. Any questions for Ken on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Okay, I got a motion by Dave Brusick to approve the second reading. Being that it is an ordinance change, we will do the vote by roll call. So councilperson Tuma?
Aye, yes.
Jerk?
Yes.
Ryan?
Aye.
Brusick?
Aye.
Mayor Nicolai? Aye. It passes 5-0.
Excuse me, Mayor, I don't believe there was a second in that, was there?
Oh, I thought that vote was...
Should be a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance. You had a motion, but no second.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll make a second. And we'll just go with the roll call. Sorry about that, Mike. Just keep me in line. Motion passes, second reading passes, ordinance, now that will go effect, what, 30?
No, it'll become effective upon publication.
Yes, we changed that at the charter meeting, didn't we? All right, good. Okay, second thing on the agenda. Ken, are you also taking this, since you are the planning guy?
Correct. All right, so the second item on the agenda is a discussion that we'd like to have with the council here tonight regarding what we more generally have termed farm animals in the city limits, and the discussion of possible future zoning ordinance and city code amendments. As council may recall, and not all of you were on the council at that time, but back on July 6th, an interim ordinance was passed at that meeting that established a one-year moratorium on the keeping of any farm animal within the city limits so that the city council had further time to study the issue. So basically, provided a one-year time period to take a closer look at the topic of farm animals in general. Really, the underlying topic that brought this about was related to what we'll generically call backyard chickens, and whether they should be allowed on residential lots within the city. I do want to note, since July 6th, didn't have any time to basically get back to this issue, and really to kind of kick things back off, I did more generically run it by the planning commission, not looking for any specific recommendations, but they did end up forming one for your consideration at their October 28th, 2015 meeting. Ultimately, they looked at the staff report, and if anybody in the audience is interested, there's a copy of the memo from the planning commission meeting back in October on the counter there. And basically, just like that general background information on the interim ordinance that was passed that prohibited any farm animals within the city for a one-year time period. We looked at current zoning ordinance language, which talked about our provisions now basically define agriculture and define farms, and both of which specifically do mention poultry farming. And the zoning ordinance specifically also notes that agriculture and farm uses are not a conditional or permitted use with any zoning district within the city at this point. So that was one of the things that we had talked about why they're not allowed at this time, they're not allowed by zoning. The other part of the city code, under the keeping of what is now currently termed non-domesticated animals, and there's discussion on whether chickens are domesticated or not, there's differing opinions on that, but we don't have any provision that says they're outright allowed either in the animal section of our city code. So those are the two provisions that would need some changing. Now, the planning commission was basically asked whether or not they felt there was a feeling one way or the other, if they thought regulations should be developed to allow the keeping of backyard chickens, or strengthen the ordinance even further that would prohibit them. Out of the four members at the meeting that night, and Jenna, who was the council rep, was not at the meeting, but the four appointed planning commissioners did make a motion specifically that was to recommend to the city council that the city code and zoning ordinance amendments be developed to allow the keeping of backyard chickens in the city with regulations to be developed, and didn't get any detail on that. And they also felt that an annual permit should be required for the keeping of those backyard chickens. I related to the planning commission at that time that it would obviously be up to the city council ultimately on what direction to take, and whether or not they would be allowed. Again, like I said, I'm not going to go over the whole report. It really doesn't say much of anything in the planning commission review, but want to go back a little bit to when the interim ordinance was passed. We did have a number of complaints that had come in on one particular property that had chickens in the city, and we believe there's a small handful of people that do have backyard chickens out there in the city right now, really not allowed, but we haven't really gone against enforcing anything on them. The one complaint that we did have with a number of residents calling was an issue related directly to smells and basically the lack of keeping it in a tidy manner. When it got really warm out, smells in the wind were a violation of not only our nuisance ordinance, but just generally that they're not allowed. So that was really the underlying issue that brought this up initially. I don't really have much more of a report at this point. I do want to note, just for your information, some other cities in the area that do or do not allow backyard chickens, just for some more background information. City of Prior Lake does not allow them. City of Belle Plaine does not allow them. City of Alcorn, New Market currently does not allow them. They are talking about it at this point. They think probably won't have anything in place at the earliest till January, might even take longer than that, and they don't know if they're going to allow them or not. City of Lansdale actually has language specifically that they are not allowed. They addressed that a couple of years ago. Most recently, this past summer, they had some residents there that approached the council to get their ordinance changed to allow them. Has not progressed any further at this point. And then finally, the three cities in Scott County that do allow them are Shakopee, Savage, and then Jordan. Noting that Jordan just passed their ordinance, passed late summer timeframe to allow backyard chickens, and a number of regulations that go along with each of those cities, but, you know, different things like setbacks to neighboring properties, limit on number of birds, annual permit being required, a fee associated with that, required cleaning of the coop and the chicken run area. So really, just looking for some direction at this point. Anything would really need to be kicked back to the planning commission to develop specifics on ordinance language, hold public hearings and things like that, gather input, but really don't have a good direction on where to go at this point. So that's why we wanted to bring it back here for you to look at tonight.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments right now? And regarding this, I know that when we did the vote in July, we were going to kind of look at it, so I guess I didn't even think it would be on the radar this soon. I figured we had a year to review or look at and see what other communities are, and I think you mentioned before the meeting that the U of M extension is coming out with some guidelines or regulations or comments?
Some comments about before you get into it, you know, things to be aware of.
Yeah.
Because they get a lot of questions about that as well.
Go over some of that?
I don't have, that's something they haven't put out yet.
No, in your discussion with them, though, didn't they say that often people bring them in and then don't know what to do with them?
Oh, yeah. You know, they maybe are overwhelmed by the keeping of them, or they're not producing, and then, you know, they don't necessarily want to kill them and don't know where to bring them. There's actually a...
Which is prohibited as of right now here. They couldn't kill them in city, within the city limits.
Technically not, no.
Right.
Right. So, yeah, there's actually a group that actually takes in discarded chickens in the metro area. Their numbers have grown, and the number of people that, you know, have them realize it's really not for them, and don't have the heart to eat them, make soup out of them, whatever. So there's a lot of, lot of interest on both sides. It's an interesting discussion. And I have done quite a bit of research. I have a whole folder here on it, so I'm prepared to go either way. But the planning commission talked about it, and as with anything, you do have responsible people that you may never even know your neighbor has them, and then you have those that obviously don't take care, and that can go for dogs, or just their general property upkeep in general. So I don't want to steer you one way or the other specifically, but...
Mayor, I got mixed emotions on this. One part of me sees the value of raising your chickens in kind of that organic setting, and on the other hand, I feel like we live in city, and we have our limits, and we live in the kind of the farming rural area of the county, and so it's a hard one to realize. But I put myself next to a place that might have chickens, and, you know, some of the distractions or the nuisance that come with that. So I'm really, I mean, I kind of feel like farming's to the farming community, and we live in such a farming area. I guess I'd lean probably a little bit for not having chickens in the city, but I do value and appreciate somebody that does want to raise them, too. So, a little mixed.
Yeah. I understand that. I think that's why it's kind of a hot button is, you know, nowadays, people, you know, with gardens and producing their own vegetables and everything, and so it's understandable that it has to be addressed. But you're kind of, Ken, you're really kind of looking for some direction tonight.
Yeah, we do need to go one direction with it or not, either draft some language that would allow them, or shore up our language that makes it very clear to everybody that they're certainly not allowed. We believe it's strong enough that it's enforceable, but Scott, if you recall from the July meeting recommended, if we're not going to allow them, we should specifically spell out that no, they are not allowed, and put that in both the zoning ordinance and the city code.
Have you had any requests, Ken?
Haven't had any requests specifically. We have people that ask quite a bit if they're allowed, and we tell them, no, they're not allowed at this point. And I would tend to believe a few of those people went ahead and have them, even in the past couple of years. I don't honestly know how many we have out there. We're not out looking for chickens, but if you drive around, you can spot a couple. It's not too hard. But we're not looking to, you know, pick anybody out and shut them down or anything, but, yeah, they're out there, and I think there's a lot of question. You know, we get calls from neighbors that maybe necessarily don't appreciate having them for neighbors, and then further find out that they're really not allowed, and would like us to take action, which we can, but it'd be nice if it strengthened further that direction, or vice versa. If they're allowed, set some regulations up for it.
Mayor, although tonight isn't a formal public hearing, we do have audience members that you would certainly be welcome to provide and allow any opportunities for input if you so choose to do that this evening.
Sure, I'm welcome. Any comments? If you'd like to make a comment, come to the microphone, sit down, state your name and your address for the records, please, and...
My name's Ryan Hoskin. I live on 118 Fourth Street Southwest, New Prague. I think having chickens is something that, if you believe in being self-sufficient and teaching your kids that, it's a great principle, and also when you have a set amount of four and, or a smaller amount, and especially with the chicken coops out today, they're easy to clean and maintain. I know personally that all my neighbors, I've actually have a couple neighbors that keep on coming, because I've always liked chickens. I don't, we don't have any, but they bug me asking when I'm going to get some chickens because they enjoy having chickens around. And I told them that would have to wait until we find out more information. With the nuisance part, it's my personal opinion that I find dogs more of a nuisance because I have neighbors where their dogs are, I'm on a corner lot, so people walk their dogs, and they let their dogs poop on my yard and pee on my yard, and I mean, but I find more use out of a chicken. And like, my parents were raised on farms, same for my grandparents, and their chickens were as pets, and I personally think that if you are looking for a community to teach people to become self-sufficient, having a limited number of chickens can be beneficial because they are useful, and they teach your kids responsibility, and it's something you can do besides having a dog, or, I mean, I know a lot of people like dogs and cats, but I'm, and I'm not saying I hate them, but I feel like they're more of a nuisance, so...
Okay. Okay?
That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. She lost the coin flip, right?
Yeah, exactly. Who's coming up?
She won it.
My fault anyhow, huh? Corinne Nunamaker, and I'm at 204 Third Street Southwest. And I'm probably one of the culprits, so, with chickens. When we moved in, I really wanted them. We read there was nothing on the ordinance that we could ever define, every place we looked, and so we went ahead and got some, actually before the July ruling. And what I guess some of the things that I was looking at and reading and looking at was timing of purchasing them is very crucial if you want to get pullets, which are all females. And so we didn't want a rooster, and we didn't want a problem, so if we were going to do it, we needed to do it right away in the spring when they first come out. Pullets go the fastest because if you want to lay eggs, or you have ordinances of the cities you have to deal with, you want to make sure you're there when the pullets are being sold. If you get into a mixed bucket, most of those are males, roosters, and so those become a problem immediately on keeping and even raising them. So some of that was like, okay, if we're going to do it, let's just jump in and do it. We can't find anything, we haven't heard anything back. We did wait. Eventually, we got a phone call and said, well, we don't really encourage them, but you could present it to the board again. And we're like, well, you know, we're not really good about wanting to come and present it to the board, which maybe we should have done earlier. But, so anyhow, we have chickens in our backyard, and I totally agree with having some rulings around them, and that it needs to be respectful and courteous, and they should be within a coop. When we were researching those, we were looking at different coops that are allowed in Richfield and other parts of the country, and other parts of, I wasn't specifically looking in Scott County, I was actually looking at different counties. So, and then a portion of giving them space to actually have a little bit of space to be in the backyard, so, because chickens need some scratching and pecking, and so that is an issue that you have to deal with. So ours are kind of penned in, and we have a little path that we move their little coop every two weeks so that it doesn't ruin our backyard totally. It has time to regrowth, and it gives the chickens what they need of rocks and all that kind of stuff. So they are a lot of work, I'm not going to deny that. People need to know that going into it. But regulated, I think, is a great way of doing it, where you wouldn't want somebody to get out of hand. I understand that, too, for ordinances, but I agree with you in the back, we do have two dogs, and they are way worse than our chickens. They are more work, they are way more messy, they get loose, and then I'm chasing them down the street. So, I mean, with an ordinance, I understand the need to have an ordinance, to have some boundaries around them, and I think that's okay to enforce, but to completely ban it in an age where we are talking about holistic living and building in our gardens, and healthier eating, and exposing our kids to things that they don't get exposed to, and we live in a farming community. We still, I mean, yes, we are in the city limits, but we are really known for a community of farming community. And so take that away from some of us who can't afford a farm. I mean, if I could be on 10 acres, I would be on 10 acres and out of the city. But for us, you know, financially, we have no option of that at all to happen at this point in time. And so this is just a really neat tool that we've gotten to talk with our kids about, and responsibilities with them, educating them, learning about them, and then providing a source of, you know, food for my family, my mom, my dad, my brothers and sisters, things like that, that's a tangible way. So I understand ordinances. I would suggest, yes, we need to have something clearly defined. I would not be opposed to any of that. But to just take it out with no ordinance, I do feel like that's kind of a, you know, I would see that to be very sad. But there are a lot of places that you can get rid of your chickens. I mean, I have like three or four people that would take ours at any time if we had to get rid of them. We just would choose not to get rid of them if that's at all possible, so...
How long does a chicken, what's the lifespan of a chicken, you know?
The lifespan can be long. Under domesticated living, you can have a chicken anywhere from 15 to 25 years that live. Now, they don't lay that long. The average layer, if you want to lay it, you know, have a producing crop, is about three years. So after three years, you do have to choose, a friend of ours that has a little organic farm that they sell, she's like, well, if you really love them, you can just keep them. And my daughter does love them, but I keep telling her, no, they'll be stew after three years. So just go into this knowing we are not keeping it. But that's one thing about an ordinance I would suggest to evaluate. It takes a chicken 18 to 24 weeks before they ever produce. So like, is that right? I said that wrong. We got them right away in April. They didn't start producing until like the second week of August. That's a big chunk of time you're investing in that chicken with no production. So then, when you, at the end of their cycle of three years, and you need to determine, are they just pets, or are they, you know, are you getting rid of them? Because their production is going to go down significantly. Then, there's a timing, I would say, as a gap. When you put the ruling on of five chickens or six chickens, I do have six, because that was just a nice even number for our family of eight, and six eggs a day would keep us supplied, you know, was kind of my thought. But in that ordinance, I guess I would consider, they have to purchase those small chicks and, you know, have them in a very secure, not outside environment while they're growing to a point where they can, you know, be outside in the environment. And that's going to give you an overlapping time of those little chicks who have not begun to lay, and the chicks who are now ending their production but still producing some. So we haven't even figured out exactly how to do that. But I just, it's something to think about, because I'm like, well, man, if we had to get rid of them, and then we have to wait a whole another six months, or whatever, four months, or whatever it is. So it's just something we are in the process of thinking about, too. How do you do that? But, so, I don't know if that was helpful or not.
No, it's helpful. Obviously, I grew up in New Prague. I did not live outside, you know, in the farmlands, but, so, you know, educational process of, you know, the whole process. But now, have you seen any issues of outside animals trying to get at your chickens, you know?
We've had a couple dogs, yeah, that have come to the neighborhood, and we've wrestled a few of them away, yes. But though usually the owners are coming behind shortly after to retrieve them, and, you know, so, I mean, it could be an issue. It's, but that's kind of the risk, I guess, I'm taking having a chicken. So, I mean, if you're a hunting dog and you get loose, you're probably going to come and hunt on my property. So, I guess, that's a risk I have to take.
You have a fence around the backyard?
Around our chickens, but not around our backyard.
Okay, so they're pretty much contained in the coop itself?
The chickens are contained within the coop, but, but when you have a nice, large dog who can lift the coop side where you pick the eggs out, it lifts up.
Right.
So you can retrieve the eggs. They can use their nose and get it open. Our chickens are just smart enough to go to the other side, and every time he would run from one side to the other, they just switch sides of the coop. So, I mean, it worked out fine, but we have had that incident a few times, so. But, again, that goes back to the ordinance, and that's, you know, I have dogs as well, and I understand they get loose, and, you know, and they've been great about chasing us, you know, their dogs down onto our property, but it's just homeowners, I mean, it's part of living in the city as well, I guess. So I'm not going to be offended that their dog came to my property. Hopefully, they're not offended. I have chickens on my property, so...
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the education. Appreciate it. Any comments on which way we do want the planning commission to look at, a direction? Do we want to feel we need to get more educated?
I would tend to lean towards prohibiting chickens and farm animals. I grew up in the rural area, and I commend those that want to have sustainable living and be self-sufficient. That's very commendable. I think with living in the city area, it's different. There's many other opportunities. 4-H, my family's part of 4-H, our kids go to the farms and help. They've offered, been offered to rent animals on the farm, too, so they can take care of them. So it's one way of teaching for those that say they want to teach their children. One of the other main reasons is because we live in the city, I have a hard time with all the enforcement, the permitting, and enforcing the codes, the time that'll take for city staff, also the other things growing in the country. I know the raccoons always come. We've had problems with raccoons at our house in the town already, even without any other animals around. I think it brings in other animals and attracts other animals. So those are my comments, my thoughts on it. I would not be in favor of it.
Okay.
I think Amy said it well. The majority of people that I've talked to just are not in favor of it on a city lot for the very reasons that were listed and that really got this discussion going was the smell, and even though the two people who spoke sound like they are doing it the right way, that doesn't mean everybody's going to do it the right way. And unfortunately, we can't pick and choose who gets to have chickens or not. It's an all-or-nothing thing. And, you know, it's, along with this, it was, you know, people were asking about ducks and bees, and, you know, you can go down that sustainability road quite a bit. Someone's going to want a goat, because goat milk is the new thing, or whatever. So, again, we're in a city limit. I purchased a house. I want to be able to sit on my backyard, or in my backyard, or my deck, and not smell a chicken, not hear them clucking in the morning with my windows open. And I think that was a general consensus with most of the people that I've talked to, unfortunately. Although I do commend you guys, because it sounds like you guys have really put the time in and moving the coop around and whatnot. I just don't think that most people are going to be as responsible as that. So that's when the complaints start, and so I'm against chickens in the city limits, or any farm animals for that matter.
You want to make a comment, David?
Yes, I do. I grew up in New Prague. In my backyard, I had, my grandparents had quite a few chickens, certainly more than six. In fact, I had a pet rooster named Peter. I loved Peter because he would always chase my cousin away whenever I told him, "Peter Sigam." It was like... It was like a dog, he would. Also had rabbits in the backyard, tame rabbits. Had a tame horse in the backyard, not ours. I wanted a horse very badly, but Dad says, "No way. They don't belong in the city limits." Besides, we can't afford them. I don't feel that New Prague is any, any longer a rural community. We were, when I was growing up, a farm community. Now, yes, there are farms around here, but whereas back in the 50s and 60s, farming was a business, very much of a vocation. And there were many business people in town who had direct relations with the farming community in the form of implements. That's no longer the case. We're getting very much to be more urban in nature rather than rural. I was one of the council members that got calls about a specific chicken raiser. And they were not very complimentary, the people that had them. They didn't fence them in. They didn't really, from what I could tell, ever had them in a pen of any kind. And I applaud both you couples for doing what you're doing. I tend to agree with Sean that there are very few people that I think do as much as you two would, you four would do, or at least certainly you last two would do. I am not in favor of this. In fact, if an ordinance is created, I did read through the ordinances of those communities that do have it. If this community does go that route, I am going to make certain that the ordinance is more specific negatively than is Jordan's. Because I feel there are too many people that are irresponsible. They're irresponsible with dogs and I don't think they'll be any better with chickens. That's my opinion and I'm very serious about it.
Okay. Jenna, you've already stated your opinion. I guess I'm really kind of in the same mode, you know, as growing up in New Prague. Not a, not a farm person, but, you know, my dad owned a bar. And, you know, we were very fortunate that a lot of the patrons were farmers and supported the bar. And, and, you know, we always had fresh eggs and fresh chickens and, and all that stuff. But they were in a different setting. So, again, along with any animal in the city, cats, dogs, everything, you know, you have the, the people who handle them correctly and the people who don't. And, and I think as most things, the people who don't handle them correct, they handle them incorrectly kind of ruin it for everyone. I get a lot of calls on people who do not pick up the waste of their dogs as they're walking them around the park or, you know, and this, especially in the spring when the snow melts. You know, and you just, you know, you know, I, I, the feeling I get is that it's your responsibility to have that dog. And it's your responsibility to take care of that dog's things. And so, I guess based on what consensus is coming out of here, I guess, Ken, I guess we're kind of looking, from the council standpoint, that we'd like the planning commission to kind of look at the zoning ordinance and that stuff with the, the thought that, the consensus thought of the council is that we would prohibit the animals, you know, and again, we'd have to define it because to Sean's point, if you just define it as chickens, someone's going to want ducks. And if you define it as ducks and chickens, someone's going to want geese and, and sort of things. So I think we, we need to really work with the city attorney, you know, once we get to the language of it, so that it's, it's specific to the, the goals of the council. Okay. Is that good enough, Mike? We don't, okay. Sounds good. Again, I would thank you very much for your guys' comments. And, and again, there, there'll probably be a public hearing when it goes to the, the planning commission to speak out again. And, but again, thank you very much for your time.
Sure.
The one more meeting, I'm looking at, okay, being responsible. I know decisions made, like we have.
I'd have to really talk to our city attorney about the workings of how that might play out, I guess is the best way to put it. So, yeah. But like the mayor said, probably, there'll probably be more than one meeting yet on this. So I could certainly put you on a mailing list for the meetings and things like that, so keep you in the loop.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, consent agenda. Anyone have any questions, issues on the items on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I have a few. Have to do with the, some comments in the minutes from November 2nd. On that 14 and a half foot strip of land that the city is trying to eliminate. Has there been any contact with the other two couples, Ken?
I've been trying.
I do know one of the couples very well and I'll try contacting them, then have them call you.
Yeah, if you could. I've tried.
Okay.
And even have the neighbors, that they would have them call me and...
Still nothing. Okay.
And I actually, I should say, I did mail out letters again after the last meeting saying that, "Would you be interested if there's no cost to you?", which is how the discussion went. And I haven't, I haven't... I heard from the, the four that I already had, like, this is great, but the other two, mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll try and get a hold of at least one of those two. I don't know the other couple, but I'll try and get all those. Oh, yes. On 118 Second Street Southwest. Has that property, that's the property that the county has said that no taxes have been paid. It's going back under option bids, open?
Well, it was already bought and that's why we did the assessment hearing for the new property owner.
Has anything resulted in collecting those, that assessment?
No, they have 30 days, just like any other special assessment. They've got 30 days to pay it without interest. If they do not pay within the timeframe, then we'll certify it to the county.
Okay. I was under the impression that they might not have to pay, period?
No.
No, not that I'm aware of it.
All right, then that's my air.
No, we recertified it so that it would go back.
Okay, all right. Oh, status of city road grader. There was something in the minutes that Glenn wanted to purchase it, but there was no other comment about it, whether the council said go ahead.
Price ended up going over $4,000 and Glenn backed away. He's not going to do anything.
Yeah, Glenn was willing to pay up to like, I think, $2,500. And by the time, actually, we, we talked about it a little that night, it was already over $4,000. He said, "It's not worth spending the money for it."
We can buy a good used one for about $6,500. The, the problem was that he was looking at was the size of the type of motor grader that it was.
Okay.
With the width of the alleyway, the reason that it was of interest is that we had been using it from Scott County. And so they had put it up for sale, but if it couldn't be bought at a reasonable price, he wasn't interested in it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions in the consent agenda items? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second by Sean Ryan. I think Dave was waiting for someone over here. On my left, on my lefts over here, but I got a motion by myself, second by Sean Ryan, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Now the fun part, miscellaneous. Ken, anything else?
Oh, if anybody's interested, I have the public hearings for the land use approvals for the remodel of the CEC, the pool and the middle school on Wednesday this week, 6:30 at City Hall. So those are at the planning commission meeting on the 18th.
Okay.
So, want to see all the full detail of plans, otherwise you can wait and see them on December 7th when the items are brought forth in front of the council, so.
Okay.
Haven't had a whole lot of feedback from any of the neighborhood yet at this point. I think we had, gosh, over 60 notifications that went out, just in the general neighborhood here. And just a couple of calls. People are curious about what was going on, so. I hope, I hope we get people come out to learn more about it, so.
Have you seen the layout or?
Yeah.
How's it look?
Good. You know, parking is the biggest concern we have. Just to give you a little preview, middle school's always had a lack of parking. Will continue to have a lack of parking. They're reconfiguring the parking around the CEC site here where we park here now, with the 1923 building knocked down. Parking will be exponentially expanded here and landscaped very nicely and more usable by staff. So we should be able to get rid of all the parking off the roads that we have with staff right now. And the north end should be pretty much left over for pool and gymnasium use, which should work out pretty nicely. And that'll actually be what I've talked about with the school and we're all on the same page. Some staff will have to park from the middle school during the middle of the day and on some spaces that'll be up near the ball field, the very north edge of the, the parking lot there. So I don't know who gets the unlucky chore to walk from that far out. But that was about the best we could accommodate it and, you know, and fit everything on the property that we've got. So that was really the biggest challenge, but I think we've got some good conditions that have come out of that, barring anything that people that live around here might bring up that we hadn't thought of, so. I think it'll, it'll be a great project for the neighborhood for both the middle school and this building here. It'll look nice. Should function well.
Yeah, good. Anything else?
Nope.
Patrick, you got anything? Mary Jo's been awful quiet. No? Okay. Mike?
No.
Wow. Sean?
I have just one thing. I, I spoke to Mike the other day about it. We've been waiting for the, some type of draft or some legal work involved with the, some of the rental property in town with the water and, that's what I'm looking for, Mike, the billing of the...
Well, it's the clarification of what past practice has been and is that's not contained in the ordinance that one individual is seeking.
And we've been trying to get an answer for them and I need a consensus or some type of direction from the council.
The question is, does the council want us to move that up on the priority list above other things to, to satisfy one individual?
And what is this relating to?
What it relates to is on the billing and the practice. And you recall, we've provided previous updates in regards to, if you have a duplex, that you have two billings. And again, it depends on whether, how the structures are set up, whether you've got two sewer billings, one for each side. And in some cases, the water service comes in and is dealt with instead of individually going to the two units. It comes in and the landlord takes care of it. But there was a disagreement. We went through and tried to find all of the outstanding issues. And I think I had updated the council that we went through and did an analysis and tried to determine, as we've gone through the transition of the staff in the last number of years that I've been here, trying to take a look at essentially what past practice, current practice is in regards to the billing per number of units. We have one individual that thinks a duplex should only be charged one wastewater fee versus two wastewater fees. And as we've talked about that, that there is not an existing ordinance that clarifies or provides that language. City attorney and I've talked, we just haven't been able to get together to move that up. The, it's been sitting there, as council member Ryan has indicated, is that it's on my to-do list, but have not actually taken the time with the city attorney to raise that to the level of the highest of priorities to get that done. And he's been contacted multiple times from this individual. And although we've tried to make efforts, we just haven't been successful in elevating it to the highest of priorities. But it has been one individual asking for this.
Are you saying that, being that he has only one water meter in there, he should only pay one sewer rate?
Right.
But that doesn't mean that we can't change the ordinance to say, if you only have one meter and it's a duplex, you could have a different rate?
Well, in, in the practice has been, and there were some challenges with him with different renters and that, that we went through some gyrations of trying to clean up the situation because in a number of cases, you had, in this specific one, where there were not two separate water meters, you had one water meter that one of the two renters was paying water for the entire duplex. So then when we went through and tried to change that and to get it put into the name of the owner, and as part of that change, something happened with the billing on the separate wastewater services. And so we finally got that clarified and rectified. But it's been an ongoing discussion, trying to determine how this individual feels about that issue. And as we took a look at all of the different multifamily units throughout town and what the practice has been, is it has generally been that based on each residential structure, there is a wastewater billing for that. Whether you've got, you know, a single-family house or whether you have a duplex where you have two separate renters in there, is, it's been that way. But our language in our city ordinance does not reflect that.
And he's contacted various people at, at the city and he's been looking for an answer. And he gets, it's been stated that it's past practice, it's policy. But he's asked to see the policy and there isn't really anything drawn up. And it's been four, four months. And I'm not saying that, I'm fine with it. I'm just acting on behalf of a constituent that I happen to see and trying to get him an answer. And, and I agree, we've had a lot of different stuff with the industrial park and now we're into budgeting. And, you know, I, I, our docket is full and I, I understand that. And I'm not trying to imply, Mike, that you're not doing anything. I just told him I would bring it up. About six weeks ago, I, I contacted Mike. We thought we were going to get something in November. Well, now it's our second meeting. And I just want to be able to tell him that, hey, we're working on it and the council's informed. And if it's not a high priority item with the consensus of the council, at least I can give this individual that information back.
And you've seen that in a number of things that we've brought to you in the past is that not in all cases are all of our ordinances and policies written down in the way that I would ultimately like to have all of them. And so I believe I have general wording and the approach that Scott and I have talked about, just haven't actually finished off preparing the draft ordinance to put together that would come to you in the form of two readings. And so that's really what it entails. But it would then clarify and have in our city ordinances that process. And there's no question, we're better off having that in place than not having that in place so that we don't have to have the debate on the question.
And to be honest with you, I'm sure the individual won't like the way that that ordinance is written, but at least it isn't, it would be in place and it would solve the problem. I think that's kind of the sticking point.
So what do you think, Timmy, Mike?
Well, as Sean indicated, that I, I had hoped and as I had conversations with him, but you're right, when we came down to doing budgeting in the baseball and the swimming pool in the industrial park, it was not the highest of the priorities that I thought that I was challenged in responding and the staff was challenged in responding to, to do for you. So it, it probably is a matter of sitting down with the city attorney and probably within an hour or so, we can probably have some draft language in that. And whether we have that back to you for the second meeting to start with in December or the first meeting in January, we, we can probably hit one of those.
Yeah.
I just have a question on the, on the process. When is our fee schedule accepted in December 20?
Our fee schedule is January 1st.
On January 1st?
Yes.
So some of that maybe could be, I think it would be nice to correspond with that if we can possibly get the timing about right.
But it, it, it's not a fee-based issue.
Right, I know, but I read, and I, I understand that. But when I was reading some of the, and some of the fees just to me needed to be clarified along with that ordinance. So if possibly, I don't know, even if we have a workshop or something to do that ahead of time. That's just what I saw. I don't know if, as coming in and reading it.
Please let us know that we've been going through that resolution here for some number of years and there hasn't been that interest. If you have something and you think it needs to be clarified, please let us know and we'd be happy to...
But I think it ties together. I think it was about the same type of issue. I think it was about the same type of issue. So that's why I'm saying I think they...
But this one is a fundamental disagreement over how the billing should occur, not the rate that's in place.
Or how the rate is...
Right.
And, and we went through a whole process with the landlords and the renters, with the utility board and the council here in recent years on the utilities.
Correct, but I just think some of the language could be clarified a little bit too, so it sort of goes along with the same type of issue. So that's why I was saying if the timing works where they could sort of both be reviewed at the same time, is to make sure everything correlates.
I'm not certain they both do the same thing, but we can, uh, you would have that on for the second meeting in December is when you would have the resolution so that that has any proposed rates and changes effective that go into a play January 1. Uh, the ordinance is going to take a reading and an introduction to adopt it and then to get it, uh, published before it would be effective. And so all we would be attempting to do is to develop language that would essentially mirror the current billing practices, but to reduce that to writing. So if you want it up on top of the list, we can certainly move it there if that's your intent and desire.
Well, it's, it's been a number of months and, and, and I know we've been busy. And again, it's not on the top of my list as either, but, uh, he is a constituent that has asked me to try to get some clarification for him and that's what I'm trying to do with bringing this up. I think he and I probably don't agree on how it should be written or how it will be written and how it'll probably pass, but, um, at least I can get him an answer. And he is, like I said, a, a landlord within the community that has multiple properties.
We've got three weeks, we can probably get a draft of an ordinance for the first meeting in December.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that was it.
David? Amy? I don't have anything else myself, so I guess, do we make a motion to go into closed session, Mike, or no? How do we go in closed?
Yeah, that's, that would be the next step.
Okay. Uh, closed, done with, uh, miscellaneous, so I guess I'll make a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, thank you.